Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. Will we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening to everyone, could I please get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion, a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert, Communications?
Yes, we have three communications. The first is that Luke Hill, who is the instrumental music teacher at Bradley, has received for the fourth year a $5,000 grant from the Bruning Family Foundation, and he will use that money to purchase an oboe and also to help fund musical instruments and tutoring, after-school tutoring for students who cannot afford music lessons, so we congratulate Luke on that. The second is that we did receive a LEAPs grant, this is a grant through the state, the lottery grant, for $145,000, and this will be $145,500. This will be for after-school programming for three of our schools, for John Pitter, Northfield, and Black Fox. And then finally, we'd like to invite you and also invite the viewing audience to our Back to School Blast. This is a partnership with Parks and Rec that will happen at Cannonsburg, and it will occur on August 27th, from 10 until 2:00. So we would like to invite all families to that and also to invite you to that. And those are the communications.
Dr. Andrews?
I did ask for permission to put this in tonight, and I just wanted to mention that I had a wonderful contact with one of my patients the other day, who is a kindergarten teacher at Bradley. And she's just finished her first year as a teacher. She is so excited and so proud and so happy to be doing what she's doing where she's doing. They had excellent results on their Ames Web testing, I mean, just wonderful results, as good as you could possibly imagine. She was so excited about her team, her team of three kindergarten teachers, and the other two were not new. She had a lot of help from them. There's powerful leadership at that school, and she loves the PALS program, the Peer-Assisted Learning, which evidently in the schools that we've used it in, it's made a huge difference. She is so excited. Brittany Gonzalez, I mean, she's going to be a fabulous teacher for many years to come. She got a great start, she had good training, she's got a wonderful heart and spirit, she's got good programs, she's got good support, she's got good teamwork, and I'm sure that that's happening all over the system. That's just one person that is so excited about what she's doing. We're really fortunate to have teachers like that. And I heard another story as I came in today that I can't tell, I can't steal that story from somebody else, but it's just wonderful to see that kind of thing happening. It's really exciting, and I know each one of you hears those stories all the time, but it just really touched my heart and I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. Can I get a motion for the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there are no questions, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Action items, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Baker.
Okay, under our action items, we have several policies to bring before the board for first reading. The first policy I will go over is a new policy. It will be found at SS-13. It deals with service animals in district facilities and vehicles. This policy is a result of some revisions to the Americans with Disabilities Act regulations that deal with service animals. And under this policy, it is stating that, as we know, under the Americans with Disabilities Act, no qualified individual with a disability shall be, shall by reason of such disability be excluded from participation in or denied the benefits of services, programs, or activities of a public entity such as our school system. And to effectuate that policy of the federal government, the U.S. Department of Justice set out some rules and regulations that deal with the use of service animals by individuals with a disability. Under this policy, under the new regulations and our policy, it permits an individual with a disability to be accompanied by a service animal in a Murfreesboro City School building, which would include a classroom on Murfreesboro City School property, on vehicles owned or leased by the city schools, and also at school functions. Now, the new regulations, this is one of the changes that came with these new federal regulations, is the definition of service animal. It is now defined by the federal regulations, and we have to follow this definition. It sets out that a service animal is any dog or miniature horse, if deemed appropriate, that is individually trained to perform specific tasks for the benefit of an individual with a disability, including a physical, sensory, psychiatric, intellectual, or other mental disability. And other species of animals are not considered service animals under the federal regs. These are the only two animals that will qualify as service animals pursuant to the federal regs. Now, the animal has to be utilized by the individual to perform a task or work that the individual needs assistance with due to their disability. For example, some examples would be an individual who is blind or has low vision may utilize, need to utilize a service animal. It could be utilized by individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing to alert them to the presence of people or sounds. It could provide nonviolent protection or rescue work. It could pull a wheelchair, assist an individual that has seizures to alert them to, and also could be utilized to alert individuals to the presence of an allergen. And it could provide physical support and assistance with balance and stability. Now, these are some of the examples. There are, of course, many other ways a service animal could be utilized. Now, under the regulations, an individual with a disability shall generally be permitted to utilize a service animal that meets the definition, that is required for, due to the individual's disability, and that has been individually trained to do work or task for that individual. We, as, under the regulations, the school system, or any governmental entity, you cannot ask inquiries about the training, you cannot ask for details about the individual's disability. The questions that can be asked are, is the animal required because of a disability, and what work or task has the animal been trained to perform? If it is a student or an employee that is in need of a service animal in one of our facilities, they would be required to make a written request to the director at least 10 business days before the student or employee is going to bring the service animal into the facility. And this is for those situations where it's a service animal that will be in the facility on an ongoing basis. And we can ask, ensure that the animal does have all of its current vaccines, that is one of the requirements that you can place on the service animal. If it is just a visitor to our facility and one-time use in our facility, that individual shall be permitted to bring the service animal in during that visit. Now, the dogs are required to have all of their current vaccinations, and same with miniature horses. There are requirements for hygiene. All of the service animals have to be treated and kept free of fleas and ticks, and cleaned and groomed. They, the dogs must be spayed or neutered, and the animals must be housebroken. One requirement that often raises inquiry is, who is responsible for controlling the animal? And under the regulations, the individual is required to have the animal under their control at all times by a harness leash or tether, unless, of course, they've got a disability that prevents them from holding a harness leash or tether. If that's the situation, the animal has to be under their control through verbal commands. If it is a child that is not old enough to control the animal, then the parent would be responsible for having, either being there to control it for the child, or having someone else be with the child at the school. The city school system is not responsible for providing someone to control the animal. The individual that is bringing the animal into our facility is responsible for that, as well as that individual is responsible for the animal's care and supervision. So, again, if it's a young child that cannot walk the dog or care for the animal, the parent would need to come and take care of the animal. Our staff does not have to provide that care for the animal. Under the federal regulations, the owners of these animals are liable for any harm or injury caused by the animal to staff, visitors, or students, or school property. And we could, the basis for removing the service animal from the school would include that the animal is out of control, the handler is not adequately keeping the animal under their control, or the animal poses a significant risk to the health or safety of others, or the animal is not housebroken, or the animal's presence fundamentally alters the nature of the service program or activity. If there are conflicting disabilities, for example, we have someone severely allergic to a dog, and someone that needs the dog to provide them services for their disability, we are required, under the federal regs, to engage in some sort of mitigating the situation and see if there's any way short of kicking that service animal out, so to say, that we would have to find other ways to handle the situation. Now, the federal regs require you to balance the severity of the conflicting disabilities, and, of course, the most severe disability would win out in that balance. But it does encourage the owners of the facilities to find a way to mitigate the need to not allow the service animal. That's the summary of this new policy, and it's just straight out of the federal regs. There's not a lot of leeway in these type of policies.
Ms. Tornier?
If there are no questions...
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to comment that I've always had tremendous respect for the service animals, the organizations that train the service animals, especially dogs, and now I'm going to have to expand my thinking to include miniature horses, which is pretty cool, it's exciting and cool.
Ms. Tornier?
I move for approval on personnel policy of SS-13.
Second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor, board, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. The next group of policies deal with personnel issues, and I believe Mr. Ringstaff will handle those.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the last couple of years, our representatives on Capitol Hill have been pretty busy in several policies that we'll go over tonight and during the next several months will reflect the changes in those laws. First, we'll start with PER-20, Personal and Professional Leave for Licensed Personnel. Lines 11 through line 30 reflect the change in the law 49-5-711. It gives the director of schools or the directors-designee some leeway on whether or not they can allow professional personnel to take personal leave or professional leave in certain situations, such as if more than 10% of the teachers in any given school request leave on the same day, if personal leave is requested during any prior established student examination period, if personal leave is requested on a day immediately preceding or following a holiday or vacation period. And the last two, it's dependent upon the Murfreesboro City School Board to adopt a calendar before the school year begins, if personal leave is requested for days scheduled for professional development or in-service training, and if personal leave is requested for days scheduled for parent-teacher conferences. And we recommend approval of this policy.
I move we approve this policy.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll move to PER-21, Assignment, Transfer, or Reassignment of Licensed Personnel. This is going to be a quick one. This is a change that they made with the 10-year evaluation law. They moved the date from May 15th to June 15th, that we have to have a tentative assignment list of licensed personnel in each school. We recommend approval of this policy.
Are there any questions before I ask for approval?
That list has to be posted in the school by June 15th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion for the approval?
Also moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next is PER-25, Sick Leave for Licensed Personnel. Lines 12 through 17 reflect the Sick Leave Bank Act, TCA 49-5-801, which basically states that teachers have a voluntary right to join the sick leave bank and pull the sick leave with other members of the bank. And lines 36 through 39, it states a professional employee when on a pre-approved leave or other type of leave shall not be charged with a day of leave for any day on which the professional employee's school or the school district is closed due to natural disaster, inclement weather, serious outbreak of contagious illness, or other unexpected event. And I would like to add that we have not done that in the past anyway, but we would like to include that in the policy. We would like to recommend approval for that policy.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. PER-26, Sick Leave for Full-Time Classified Personnel. It's basically the same as the previous policy, PER-25. I would like to make some wording corrections on line 24. I would like for line 24 to begin, "A classified employee when on a pre-approved leave." I would like to cross out the word "when" at the beginning of that sentence, and also including "a classified employee." I would like for it to reflect the same language as the previous policy, instead of saying "a professional employee," say "a classified employee." And that's the only change on that policy.
Let me move that change again, please.
Mr. Ringstaff, would you please go with that change one more time?
Yes, ma'am. Cross out the word "when" on line 24, and then capitalize "A," "a classified employee," and then cross out "including a classified employee" and insert the word "when." "A classified employee when on a pre-approved leave or other type of leave shall not be charged with a day of leave for any day on which the classified employee's school or the school district is closed due to natural disaster, inclement weather, serious outbreak of contagious illness, or other, ooh, unexpected event."
I move we pass that as we suggest with that amendment.
There's a motion and a second?
Second.
Thank you. There is a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Ms. Ridley, I wanted to get a chance to feel to send that correct one to the board.
Thank you. The next policy is PER-38, the FMLA and Tennessee Maternity Act. We are asking you to approve this tonight on first reading. We will come back with you next month with some additional recommendations for change. This is reflective, in Tennessee, we have the luxury of two laws that enable employees to take leave. One is the federal law of FMLA, and the second is the Tennessee Maternity Act, which allows employees, or spouses, to take up to four months of unpaid leave. And this law, and this policy, PER-38, is basically the language of those two policies, ooh, of those two laws combined. But I would like to add on the third page, lines 105, it states, "A professional employee, including a professional." We would like to cross out "professional employee, including a professional," and have that sentence read, "an employee," because we do it with professional employees and classified employees. We would like for it to read, "an employee on pre-approved leave or other type of leave." We recommend approval for this, PER-38.
Ralph, did you say that you're going to bring this one back again next month for more revisions?
Yes, more additions.
Can we just wait to the policy study session and just look at those revisions and do it all at one time?
We can. This is passing on first reading. We can do that. It's up to you.
We're just passing first readings on all of these tonight.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval on first reading with the change as outlined.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. One last.
Ms. Phillips, hands down.
Just a real quick comment for the folks watching at home. When we talk about the maternity leave, we also include situations of adoption, is that correct, Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, ma'am, that's included in Tennessee Maternity Leave Act.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next policy is PER-40, Discipline of Non-L licensed Employees. This is, our representative passed a law that requires that all persons who are employed in positions not requiring a professional teaching license shall be hired at the will of the director. So those positions are at-will positions, according to pursuant to TCA 49-2-301B1FF. And this is a policy that will reflect it. This law states that all school boards must have a policy to this effect, and we recommend approval of this policy.
Mr. Campbell?
Could you, for the benefit of those other people that have not looked at this like we have, could you go over the difference between what was and what now is pertaining to at-will employees?
Yes, sir. Before, employees who, I guess, really all employees, certified and classified, were hired on a contract basis, year to year, and for misconduct or anything else, due process was in effect. Director, they had to go through a process in order to terminate a classified employee and a certified employee. Now, after the approval of these policies on second reading, classified employees are at-will employees. We're going to establish some guidelines, but the employees, classified employees, are at-will employees. Tennessee is an at-will state.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Phillips, and then Mr. Tornier?
I just want to say that just because the law has changed and our classified employees are no longer under contract, it does not mean that we value those employees any less. They are very valued and appreciated and part of the Murfreesboro City Schools' family.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ringstaff, it also states in that policy that the director of schools will establish a procedure for discipline up to, including termination, of a non-licensed employee. So there is a procedure, but it's to the director of schools to set that procedure for discipline.
Yes, sir, there will be a procedure. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Gilbert?
Okay, reports and information, you have your personnel report, your monthly revenue and expenditure report, and your attendance update, Mr. Anderson?
On the budget information and the financial report, we have total income for the month of $4,818, and we spent $2,406,000. We're in the red. It's a very good thing we have something called a fund balance to make sure our bills are met and paid. Every year, we start out like this, we're at the 8.33% of the year, and really, money doesn't start flowing in until August, so that's to be expected every year. On the expenditure side of that, we have two of the categories that are over 8.3. One is pupil transportation, and that's because of the purchase of the buses. As you know, we, had you approved, they would come out of fund balance, but we need to show them as an expenditure, and then we transfer it out into the fund balance, so it's going to show up there as an expenditure. The other one is other support, which is at 11.6%, that is the technology budget, and that's where we buy all of the equipment and stuff to install over the summer. So that's why that one hits. But, you know, it's for the beginning of the year, we are where we expect to be at this time. Any questions on the finance? Okay, the next one is the enrollment. As you know, this is the beginning of the school year, and we don't have the big enrollment sheets for you until after the first 20 days of school. I included in your packet an earlier version. We gave you tonight, yesterday, as of yesterday's enrollment. We did increase enrollment since then. The budget was built on 6,850 students, and right now, we're at 7,058 students. Now, that's for the BEP classification. That doesn't count all of the pre-K children, because we only can count in the BEP, the special ed pre-K. So when you add in the additional pre-K children, we're about 7,400 students total in our district right now, but the funding, the way it's laid out is through the funding. Our pupil teacher ratio right now, as of yesterday, was for grades K through 3, we're at 19.09, and for grades 4 through 6, at 20.79, and our average was 19.72 PTR ratio. Our numbers across the very bottom, you'll see the grades and how many students are in each grade and the PTR. If you look at the numbers that are written vertically, the numbers are very strong in our earlier grades, which is usually a very good sign of growth in the district, and obviously this year, we did experience some growth, so we're very happy with those numbers at this point. We do have an increase over last year, as you know, and we're pretty excited about where we are right now, this time of the year.
I was just going to ask the percentage of the growth, Mr. Anderson?
You know, I didn't figure that one out. Well, let's see, I'd have to get my calculator out.
Do we still have to get the 2% to get special funds from the state?
Well, we have 200 students, basically on 7,000, so we should...
Get our growth money?
Get our growth money. Growth money comes in two times now, in January, and then at the end of the school year. It used to not come until after the end of the year for the following year. The state legislature changed the rules, so last year, we didn't get any growth money, but this year, we do anticipate having some significant growth money.
And that attributes to about $800,000 if you have 200 more students in enrollment?
It's roughly, roughly the amount that we get per student in the BEP form is about $4,000 per child, so if we have 200 children, it's approximately $800,000, potentially more. You never really know, because the state, the way they do the pool, but we should be in that neighborhood.
How many pre-K kids did you say that we have that we do not get funds for?
Well, we do get funded, but it doesn't come through BEP funding. We get a lot of them through the voluntary money from the state, I forget, the voluntary grant. We have, I think it's five classes that are locally funded, I believe, I think it's five. And then we have special ed funds, seven classes, and all the rest are funded out of the voluntary lottery monies, and that's it.
Were you hearing anything about that next year?
It's been pretty quiet, haven't heard anything lately.
I don't think that it's going to go away. I mean, we really need to plan for that, because we have to think, that would destroy an entire school in our district, and it's a school that we're not getting... a school that we're not getting revenues for the children through the BEP. So, we should have a plan for that, I think. But the commissioner talked to superintendent group last week and said that that was probably going to go away next year. That was his feelings, that and coordinated school health.
Okay. We will certainly follow up.
Just being aware of that, we might need a plan.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Andrews? Yeah, what time in the year are we, do they look at our pupil teacher ratios? Do you think we're going to be okay if we continue to have more children show up?
We have really, really analyzed that, and what we look at is, the number has to be in K through 3, a 20-to-1 ratio, but they do allow up to 20.49 of that ratio. What we do is we add the number of potential students, what we think will happen in growth, and we look at past years. We feel we're okay right now. We're really okay on 4 through 6, and we're watching two schools on the K through 2, but we feel pretty good about those right now, and that's Casey and Hobgood on those schools with that 20-to-1 ratio. We feel we're okay right now.
I'd like to comment, too. I really hate to see Hobgood have high pupil teacher ratio. In years past, it's had a smaller ratio to kind of help them with the challenges that they have. And, you know, I certainly want to keep on supporting the schools that have the higher number of free and reduced lunch children with smaller classes. We need to support them, I think.
The other key point about funding is that months, attendance months 2, 3, 6, and 7 are the ones that count towards your enrollment numbers, BEP numbers. So, those are the four main months that we look for to make sure. Now, we haven't even finished month 1, but that's where we're really headed.
Okay. Do you mind repeating that, Mr. Anderson?
I didn't catch it. What are the months that they?
The key months for attendance are months 2, 3, 6, and 7. And we haven't finished first one. We're on day 12 today. So, we got the first 20 days would be the end of month 1, and then the next 20 days, month 2.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson or Dr. Gilbert, or anything for other business? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Next motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Good evening.